I would like to call to order the October 25th, 2022 meeting of Columbia Heights Public School Award. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mary, can you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Louis.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Zymet.
Here.
Granland.
Here.
Mueller.
Thank you.
Here.
And Superintendent Stenbik.
Here.
Hey, at least I didn't call you Kathy Kelly.
Thank you. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Moving on, we have the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved?
In a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Brenna and second by Laura. Any discussion?
Can I make a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, for...
I'm sorry, to add the timeline.
Yep, to add an action item.
I'm sorry.
Yep, for the timeline, yeah, for the special election.
Seriously, I'm not here yet.
You're good, thank you. Okay, so Molly makes a motion to amend the agenda, to add an action item for the timeline for the special election. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brenna. And so we will vote on that amendment. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries. So we'll now vote on the motion of accepting the agenda, which was...
With the amendment.
With the, as amended. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Objection, abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Got that, Lindsay? Thank you. Announcements, Friday. Nope, that would be a Monday. Nope, yeah, October 31st. Isn't that a Monday?
It is a Monday.
Monday, no school?
Yeah.
Standby.
It says Friday on here. November 8th is the general election. November 9th, Wednesday at 7:00 PM, is our regular school board meeting here in the community room. Note the date change to Wednesday from our normal Tuesdays. November 11th, Friday, no school. November 15th, at 5:30 here in the community room, is a special called board meeting. November 15th at 5:40 is the school board work session here in the community room. November 15th at 7:00 PM is the school board subcommittee on community engagement. November 22nd at 7:00 PM is a regular school board meeting in the community room. November 23rd, Wednesday, is a flex learning day. And November 24th and 25th, no school. Lots of announcements today. Next is correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, do we have any correspondence?
Ah, there's no correspondence at this time.
Great, thank you. Next is communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. Do we have anybody who would like to speak to us today? Nope. All right, thank you. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the personnel report from October 25th, the lane change from October 25th, and the acceptance of the resignation of Board Member Natty Severson. I get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mary?
Second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion? I have a couple things for discussion. I do have a statement that Natty Severson has provided me to read for you. She says, "With great regret, I am stepping down from the Columbia Heights Board of Education. This may come as a surprise to many of you, so I'd like to offer a bit of an explanation. My journey with generalized anxiety disorder began not long after the birth of my third child. Since then, there have been ups and downs. I have sought counseling and medical care and had an incredible support system. I'm very thankful for everyone who has come alongside me during this journey. I encourage others who are struggling to reach out for support. Over the last few months, after last few months, my mental health has gotten to a place that has led me to the decision to step down. It's my belief, at this time, I can't give myself the space to care for my mental health and give the students and stakeholders of Columbia Heights the hard work they deserve. It has been my sincere joy and honor to serve on the board for over six years. Thanks to the board, our staff, students, and community for allowing me this opportunity to serve. I hope to continue to serve the students of Columbia Heights in different ways as my health allows. Thank you and best wishes, Natty." Also, I would like to make a comment. I would like to thank Natty for her six years of service on the Columbia Heights Board of Education. She has been a thoughtful and passionate leader. I respect her as a board member, chair, parent, volunteer, and community member. She has helped guide our board through many challenges, and she did so with professionalism, optimism, and an amazing sense of humor. We respect the very challenging and personal decision she made to step down and know without a doubt that she will continue advocating for the students and staff of Columbia Heights Public Schools, just as she always has done. So we thank Natty, excuse me, for her service. Any other discussion?
Yes, I think it is brave for her to be able to stand up and to show such immense leadership when it comes to making your health, including mental health, a priority. And she has worked really hard on supporting our community. And like you said, she will continue to support our community. But I think the biggest gift that she gives in this is showing people that it's okay. It's okay to put your mental health first, that it doesn't matter. Like, this can impact anybody, everywhere. And I am just so, while I'm going to be very sad that she won't be here in the boardroom with us any longer, I am incredibly proud that she is taking this very public step and also giving such a gift to our staff, our students, and all the families around, just saying that this is okay. It's okay to not be okay right now. So, you know, thank you so much, Natty, for everything, and especially for that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just publicly thank Natty. Six years on the board with her is a long time, and I guess I didn't even realize it's been six years necessarily. But she has led us through a lot, and I'm very appreciative of her leadership. She was always very thoughtful and open in the decision-making that she did and her leadership. And I'm glad that she's been here as a leader when my kids were attending and have been attending. So thank you, Natty. Take care of yourself, and we will definitely miss her here. Thank you.
I'm really gonna miss Natty at this board table, her leadership. I, just the way that she was able to coordinate and work with us to collaborate, you know, on different, on different things that we wanted to accomplish. Her attention to detail is something that I'm gonna miss a great deal, and I'm really going to miss her sense of humor as well. Natty, thank you so much. It has really been a real pleasure and honor to serve with you.
Yeah, I would just echo all that. I mean, this is what, this is what leadership looks like, is you do, you know, she has led us so well. She cuts the tension with a joke, and she's, she's been so easy to follow. And then, to be so public and open and honest about and vulnerable is how you lead people and make it okay for other people to be that way as well. So I'm just constantly in awe of her, and we'll miss her a lot, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just want to say that nobody else would ever be as excited about the boiler in Valley View, except for maybe Brian. But, I mean, it's a, it's a good legacy for her, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have our acknowledgement of contribution. This is a resolution, so I'll read this and ask for a motion in a second to approve this. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B dot zero two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $11,645.93. The detailed background is that for monetary donation of $4,972 was made to Columbia Heights Elementary School by James and Patricia Hiemack for junior achievement. A donation of $500 was made to Valley View Elementary School by Sidney W. Emery Jr. to purchase flip forms, multipurpose platforms for music class. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights Activities Department by the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters Club. $352 for the dance team wagon volunteers, $486 for girls lacrosse wagon volunteers, and $450 for Activities Department support. The value and kind donation of art supplies was made to Valley View Elementary by Sage Auto Repair for student needs. Estimated value, $478.92. Donation of winter clothing was made to Valley View by Ron and Betty Heisek for student needs. Estimated value of $51.85. Donation of winter clothing was made to Valley View Elementary School by Terry and Joanne Jaquil for student needs. Estimated value of $51.85. Donation of knit hats was made to Valley View Elementary by Mary Jenkins for student needs. Estimated value of $55. Donation of office supplies and gift card to purchase fonts and clip art was made to Valley View Elementary, second grade, by Donors Choose for student needs. Estimated value, $230.73. Donation of school supplies was made to Highland Elementary by Falden American Legion Post 555 for student needs. Estimated value, $40. Donation of office supplies was made to Highland Elementary by Maria Luhan for office needs. Estimated value of $150. Donation of classroom books was made to Highland Elementary Leap Classroom by Donors Choose for student needs. Estimated value of $950. Donation of hockey stools was made to Valley View Elementary Art Room by Donors Choose for student needs. Estimated value, $379.11. Donation of books was made to Valley View Elementary Library by Donors Choose for student needs. Estimated value of $557. Donation of classroom supplies was made to Valley View Elementary Ms. Cahill's Classroom by Donors Choose for student needs. Estimated value of $200. Donation of sports balls was made to Valley View Elementary Morning Ninja Class by Donors Choose for student needs. Estimated value of $397.47. And a donation of classroom supplies was made to Valley View Elementary Leap Classroom by Donors Choose for student needs. Estimated value of $344. Total fiscal year 2022-2023 monetary contribution to date is $40,850.18. I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Molly, in a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion?
Just a big appreciation for the people that have donated, and also to acknowledge the teachers that go out and get these donations from the Donors Choose programs. I know that's a lot of extra work, but it just shows their commitment to our children in this district, and so I appreciate that, too.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
We couldn't do any of this without the community support. It just, it makes all of it possible, and every bit of it counts for our kids, so thank you very much.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right, Mary, this is a roll call vote. It's a resolution.
Louis?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Zymet?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our discussion reports and information items. First up is reports from members of the board, and we will start with Brenna.
I went to the homecoming game, which was very cold, but very fun. Before that, there was the gym floor dedication that I was able to come in on the very end of. I participated in the fundraiser for Chipotle at North Park and stuff. The work session last week, and then I've had lots of conversations with people in the community. And Board Member Mueller, Palmer, Granland, and Superintendent Stenbik.
Great, thank you. Mary?
All right, so, um, last, the last few weeks were busy. I also attended the gym dedication and the homecoming game. It was really cold, but still really fun. And it was really neat to see the students sort of go out into the field and celebrate their win. And then I attended the work session. I have heard from several families, students, and staff regarding the SRO survey. And then also, I've had phone calls, many phone calls with Superintendent Stenbik, Director Palmer, and Zymet, I think, well, actually, all of you. I've met, I've talked to all of you about different things. And then I also had a meeting with Mayor Maza regarding the SRO contract as well, so. And that's my report.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, I also attended the ribbon cutting for a new gym floor, another wonderful donation by the community from the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters. It's a beautiful floor, and apparently we're replacing the original one that was, that has been there since the building was built. So a great job on maintenance for keeping that going for so long. But it's so great to have something bright and shiny and new, and especially, you know, with the support of the community. That was really great. I also had numerous conversations with community members, and Brenna, thank you for your time. Mary and Superintendent Stenbik. Oh, and I also attended the work session last week as well.
Thank you. Molly?
Thank you. I attended the virtual community engagement session with Members Zymet. She was there as well, yes. Also attended the work session last week, a couple of football games, volleyball games. And I had a conversation with Member Mueller, a conversation with Council Member Nowitzki. He had some questions about the SRO and the agenda, so just clarified about that, be moved. And then also had a lot of conversations with community members and students, specifically about the SRO. That's it.
For me, I also attended the gym floor, or I should say, it really is the gym. The, right, it wasn't just the floor, the whole gym grand reopening, and was very pleased to be able to cut the ribbon. That was exciting for me, so thank you for that opportunity. Also attended the homecoming game and the fireworks after, and thanks to our community for their support, several businesses and booster organization for support of the fireworks. I love fireworks, so that's my thing. I also attended the work session last week, the chair meeting last week, chair meeting just prior to this. Meeting prior to this, which included Member Zymet. Had conversations with Member Louis, former Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenbik, and Member Granland. Been a busy night, thank you. Superintendent Stenbik, do you have a report for us?
I do. Yesterday, Executive Director Niambui and Valley View teacher Mark Renner and I met with about 40 of our native Spanish-speaking parents and caregivers. We provided an overview of services in Columbia Heights Public Schools and asked them to weigh in with questions or potential areas for improvement. So a brief summary, they expressed gratitude for our bilingual homeschool liaisons and the support that they provide. They also expressed gratitude for restoring Spanish classes at Columbia Academy. They inquired about how to access mental health support for students and about the adult basic ed English classes that we offer. And then after the meeting, we fielded many individual questions. Upcoming, the district nurse is planning on hosting one or maybe two vaccine clinics in November to help families get caught up on the immunizations that are required for school. So more information will be pushed out, look for that if, if folks need, are needing any of the vaccines. This Saturday, some of us will be at Huset Park for the Truck or Treat event. If any of the board members, please contact me, you want to help out handing out the Highlander tattoos, we'll be there from one to four. I'll be in touch. Looking for volunteers, one hour shift. Okay. I've also fielded a few questions from community members regarding the candidates for the upcoming school board election. And for more information, people can watch the video. They can find the video of the candidate forum that our Teachers Union Local Number 710 hosted. That video is on the website under the school board. And then also, some of our candidates, some of the candidates have information available via links on the Secretary of State website. So those are two good places to find more information about that. And I have had conversations with Vice Chair Mueller, Member Palmer, Member Zymet, and Member Granland. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to Strategic Direction B, improving our students' academic achievement, career, and college readiness. We've got Director Godfrey and Director Tuckrell joining us.
Good evening, Vice Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenbik, members of the board. I'm here tonight with our Director of Special Education, Sarah Godfrey, to share about Strategic Direction B. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and focusing in on our Columbia Heights core values, which are aligned to the Board of Education equity statement, focusing in on excellence, collaboration, and innovation. This is an informational update, so no governance question will follow. And as we look at our metrics tonight, it's really focusing in on Strategic Direction B, which is improving each student's academic achievement and college and career readiness. And we're looking at our last year's data, so 2021-2022 school year, to see as a district where we ended up in the different categories based on the metrics. So the first category under Strategic Direction B is personalized learning. And in B1, the first metric, is our teachers engaging in professional development. And we are envisioning for that one again, as we provide a professional development on district in-service days to support our teachers. And the second metric and the third metric are based upon data from a survey. And so we saw a little dip in our teachers using data with students to provide feedback. And the feedback's being given, but as we move from distance learning into, or move from distance learning to in-person, feedback may be given a different way compared to an FY21 when we were in distance learning. The third metric in this category is establishing norms for digital learning. And we're in the vision category for that one again, as we really did carry on our norms from our previous school year when we were in distance learning. The second area looks at PLCs focused on academic achievement. And this has been a focus area as a district to supporting academic achievement for the last couple of years. We are almost to the vision category. We're still in the progressing in B21 with grade level department, PLC, rubric, and artifacts. And part of that is really figuring out that puzzle of our singletons in our secondary. So teachers who are teaching, the only teacher that teaches one subject or one class, which is business, and connecting them to ensure they have support, with looking at their evidence, looking at assessments. The second and third metric in this category looks at academic growth, which also is a huge focus area as we started heightening up a couple of years ago and focused on academic acceleration. And this is a celebration. We moved, and I had to write down the numbers because it was so impressive, our move from FY21 to FY22. And this is based on FastBridge data of our K8 students meeting or exceeding their annual growth targets. So in FY21 in reading, we went from 39% to FY22 last school year, we went to 49%. So almost to the next category. And then in math, we went from 43% to almost 60%. So quite a big jump there, and we're hoping to continue that as we move into this school year. The fourth, fifth, and sixth metric are based upon students meeting grade level standards. And we look at MCAs for that, for reading, math, and science. And in FY21, we didn't have Acura data, as assessments were not given. But in FY22, we received data, but our data was a little skewed, as mentioned, at different meetings we've had in the past. As we look at some of the factors, including students quarantining during the time of testing, opting out, or virtual learning. But with that, we also know that we have a lot of internal data that provides us the information we need to support students. So that internal data is really what we have been focusing in on to support our student growth. So you'll see science up there as a sixth metric. And then the seventh one is percent of students in the district since eighth grade meeting college readiness benchmarks. We are in the intervention category for that one, too. And we also saw a different participation. So as we look at this year, and most of our students are all back on site, we may see a different change in that, but we're monitoring that one, too. And with that, in the passage to Director Godfrey to share about the next two metrics.
Thank you. So I am talking about the PLCs focused on academic achievement. For the first column, we're in the, for the first B2.6, students meeting grade level standards in science in the intervention column. And we don't have, due to COVID, we don't have information on that from '21. Again, in the intervention column for districts since eighth, students that are in the district since eighth grade meeting college readiness benchmarks on the SAT and ACT, still needing intervention on that. Additionally, students receiving special education services in the area of reading had less than 45% of meet or exceeds their annual growth targets, both in '21 and '22. And we will talk about, in the next slide, some of the things that we plan to do about that. But a point of celebration is B2.9. For, for '22, students went from intervention to baseline. And I wrote down 60.1% of students receiving special education services met or exceeded their annual growth targets. So a celebration to be had around math. If you could go to the next slide? Thank you. So our strategies for the 2022-2023 school year, really exciting for me to share as the new person to the group. So we'll continue that heighten up plan, using our ESTR funds to maintain safe in-person learning as well as supporting academic enrichment and mental health. And we, we really focused a lot on that over the summer. A district-wide focus on literacy, as I said, we saw that that was an area that we need to grow in for this year. We have, so what will we be doing? Three early release days to provide staff time to focus deeply on data to strengthen instruction. We have peer reviewers to provide instructional coaching at each school. We're providing professional development focused on literacy and equity on district days. Staff are with their schools for that. And then we have collaborative time during in-service days for staff to meet and reflect on instruction. So a lot of time for collaboration around data, around PD, reflection, and supporting teachers as much as we can so that they can work really deeply with literacy this school year. So what questions do you have for us?
Thank you. Questions? Laura?
I actually, I just wanted to, to get more information on FastBridge and how, I mean, I understand it a bit, but maybe for the general public as to why this is working where most of the standardized tests are not, as far as getting us good information and data.
Great question. FastBridge is an assessment tool that many districts around the country are using. It is norm-based, so we're able to see where our students fall within that grade level across the board. And it provides us an opportunity to do it internally three times a year as a screener. So we're able to provide students a literacy and a math screener in the fall, winter, and spring. And that data that we can pull from there shows areas of strength as well as areas of focus. So it goes down to the student level. And then it also, we can look at a group of students or a grade level as well as a school. So teachers are able to look at that data, and they did on this data day, the past one that we had. They dug into the data, looked for trends that they could see, and adjusted their instruction. When they adjusted instruction, adjusted resources and support, we're able to then look in the winter and see how it's working and really focus in on that continuous learning and improvement as we use that data. It also supports growth. The MCA is really based upon grade level standards, and it's a standardized test with those end-of-the-year grade level standards. And we're provided that information after the school year of where we went. So this is in real time that we're able to see. So this is in real time that we're able to see. And as we have many students coming into the country, or coming in new to the district, we're able to really see their growth on there. So they might not hit the exact grade level standard yet, but we're able to see the growth that they're making throughout the year, and throughout their years in heights. And this year, we're implementing K10 for FastBridge. So we'll also have some high school data to share.
Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you so much for that. I have a quick question. So we know, within the metro, there's been an increase in students and families not taking the MCAs. And especially with the pandemic, we saw a massive decrease in the students that took the MCAs. With that information, I imagine, is it different then for how many people took FastBridge? Is there a change in that?
Yes, we have very few students or families who opt out of FastBridge.
Okay.
So FastBridge is really an internal assessment where we're able to use that data. We share the data with families as well right away during conferences or after that. So we have very few students who choose not to, or families who choose not to, compared to the MCAs.
Right. Because if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, I think 55 seniors took the MCAs last year?
I think.
Had a very small amount.
Sorry. Yeah, it was a very small amount. Sorry. Don't quote me on the number. There was a very, very small amount comparatively. And I imagine then that, that information in real time is far more helpful in seeing the majority of where our students are at. Is that correct?
And it's helpful for instruction. The MCAs are very helpful to see a district-wide picture in terms of looking at grade level standards, and then receiving support from the Department of Education that way. So they use those tests as a piece of data or assessment to provide districts with support. So that information is helpful from that district view.
Right. So I mean, we, so the FastBridge shows that our students still need some support in this, but it's not quite as dire as the MCA, given the fact that you get, if you are pulled, you just get a failed now instead of.
Yeah, if I, if I may.
Yes, please. Yes.
You're correct in that, I believe the number is 22 11th graders took the MCA math test. And so with over 200 students in the class, it doesn't present an accurate representation. And then those who choose to opt out receive, are placed in the category of does not meet standards. And so their, their score is not reflective, or it also doesn't state opted out or chose to not take the assessment. I think that's what your question is.
Yes, that's what I was, thank you. Yes, that's what I was, I couldn't remember the exact wordage, but speaking as, yeah. Yep. That would, thank you very much for that clarification.
In terms of special education in the FAST test versus the MCA, it's often more accessible to students receiving special education services. It's not such a daunting test. And so, and these are numbers from '22, but 68.6% of students receiving special education services were able to complete, they participated in the fall and spring math and reading. So that's really, it's really nice to see.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Great questions. Brenna?
So when we talk about, like, the growth targets for these students, if a student is like, not at grade level, how do you guys determine targets and like whether they're meeting those? Like, if, if a student, do they have specific growth targets that are, that are set to where they're at as people, or like their particular potential or needs? How do you guys determine that? And how do you, do those look different for each kid?
Yes, they do look different for each kid. Great question. FastBridge determines that growth target. So in a typical year, we want students to move a year, but if you're further behind, we want you to move a little faster so we can support you with that learning. So FastBridge determines what that growth target is for each student.
So like if a student is not at grade level, like, the growth target would be to make up the difference and get to the same place that their peers are at? Like, so that growth target would be like almost bigger for that student? Or does that growth target move backwards so that they're making the same amount of growth as their peers might be that are at grade level? Does that make sense?
The growth target from fall to spring will look different depending on the student. If a student is already at grade level and proficient, their growth might be a smaller amount that's needed to keep moving forward. We still want students who are proficient to keep moving forward. If a student comes in and they're new to the country, they maybe, might be receiving special education services, might have different needs there, they might be in the does-not-meet right now. And the growth target's goal is to move them up to another category. So they might not necessarily make it all the way to grade level by the end of that year, but the FastBridge sets a trajectory of where they should go in order to get to grade level.
Great.
So it would determine, depending on where you come in, determines what that growth target is.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Great questions. Any other questions? All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to the policy first reading. We have the following policies for their first reading. 208, Development of Policies. 209, I always love that one. The Policy on Policies. 209, Code of Ethics. 210, Conflict of Interest, School Board Members. 410, Employment Background Check, Form Only. 416, Drug and Alcohol Testing. 418, Drug-Free Workplace, Drug-Free School. 512, School-Sponsored Student Publications. 722, Public Data Request. So these policies are available on our website for people to review and comment, so those members in the community may do that. And then they will appear on a future agenda for approval. Mary?
I actually had a family member reach out about one of the policies. In 209, Code of Ethics, E2, we have in the line, it is, I'm gonna get, it was there. E2 says, the superintendent, give the superintendent authority commiserate with his or her responsibilities. And so we would want to edit that to be inclusive. Thank you to the family member who shared that with me. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on the policy? We will then move to our action items. Our first action item is the Authorization of Bid Publication for the Valley View and Highland Roof, and we have Director Hennekenz.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mueller and members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. This action item is Highland Roof Replacement, Call For Bid Authorization. So this evening, I'm seeking authorization to post for bid for replacement of sections of roof at Highland Elementary and Valley View Elementary. Information was provided in the board update previously, and these sections of roof were identified previously in a project that we did with a company to evaluate all of our roofs and look at the ages and shape of the roofs. And thankfully, this is, should be the end of our replacement for the time being of roofs, once we finish these, and we'll be more into just the maintaining of our roofs for quite some time, which will be very nice. And this project will be funded through long-term facility maintenance. But again, this is just an action item to authorize us to post for bid.
Thank you, Director Hennekenz. Any questions?
Do we have a goal for when this will be done? Like, when we want it done?
Summer of '23 is when this will be completed, if everything goes as we want it to. So we, of course, in this market, are concerned about how the bids will come in and whether we will accept them. But we, it's definitely a necessity that we move forward with these at this time, and hopefully, like I said, they come in where we want them to be.
Thank you. I need a motion to, excuse me, to approve, my board book is lagging, even through that talking, I'm still having issues here. I need a motion to, thank you, approve, excuse me, to authorize to publish legal notice for the bids for the replacement of sections of the Highland Elementary and Valley View Elementary roofs.
So moved.
Mary?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussions? All right, hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentenced? Motion carries. Thank you. And Director Hennekenz, you're here as well to talk about the Minnesota State High School League Foundation Form A application resolution.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. It's very weird sitting here and doing this than being on Zoom. It's like, oh my gosh, I gotta get the presentation up on the computer. I'm not just sharing my screen on my computer. Thank you. So this evening, I have the Minnesota State High School League Foundation Grant Resolution. This, just to start our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates a world of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Our core values, of course, community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation grounded on our core values are aligning with our CHPS Board of Education equity statement. So just, just quick, on this foundation grant, this is something that we've done for many years now. So this is really an annual thing, or approval from the school board. And the Minnesota State High School League's Foundation provides us resources, money, every year in the form of scholarships for activities. So they assist in, the organization assists in funding and providing competitive, equitable, and uniform participation in athletics and fine arts, you know, aiding and funding programs at schools, addressing sportsmanship and chemical health, funding other educational programs for coaches, you know, the, some contests that they are involved in, the Minnesota State High School League with judges and officials, aid in funding state tournaments and programs, really overall promoting ethical behavior fairness, embracing diversity which serves students and schools and communities. So definitely aligning with our mission around our school district. So every year, we, we submit for this at board, after board approval for the resolution. We receive anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 a year. This is really based on free and reduced numbers. So this evening, seeking approval from the school board.
Great. Thank you very much. I've got the resolution here that I will read, and then ask for a motion to approve. So we have the resolution approving Columbia Heights Public Schools' resolution of school board supporting Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, State of Minnesota, as follows. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League, MSHSL, Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the District 13 Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the MSHSL Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school districts in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education supports the district's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activities fees. I have a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura? And a second? Molly? We got a motion by Laura, and a second by Molly. Any discussion? Thank you. Mary, do a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Louis?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Zymet?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Director Hennekenz. Next, on our items, is the election of chair and other officer as needed. As we had the resignation of Chair Severson, we do need to elect a new chair. So at this time, I would like to ask for nominations for the position of chair.
I would like to nominate you, Member Mueller.
Thank you. Loriann Mueller has been nominated for their position of chair. Are there any other nominations? And we have to do it three times? So are there any other nominations for the position of chair? Thank you for your confidence. As there are no other nominations, the position of chair has been appointed to Loriann Mueller. Thank you. As such, now the position of vice chair is open, so I do need to ask for nominations for the position of vice chair.
I would like to nominate Member Palmer.
Thank you. Member Palmer has been nominated for the position of vice chair. Are there any other nominations for the position of vice chair? And for the third time, are there any other nominations for the position of vice chair? Congratulations to Member Palmer, who's been elected as vice chair.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to action item D, which is a action item to set the date for the special election for the school board vacancy. So what we need to do is, we need to set, to make a motion and have an action item related to the, the election date. And just a couple of notes here, we are able to have an election in April, May, August, or November. So those are the four dates where elections are possible.
District clarity, in 2023.
2023. Thank you. 2023. We will talk about the appointment under board topics next. So if we were to have an election in April, it would be the second Tuesday in April. Applications, or people who.
Filing.
Filing, thank you, would open roughly, approximately January 16. If we had the election in May, it would be May 9, and filings would open February 14. If we had the election in August, it would be August 8, and filings would be roughly May 15. And for the election, it would be November 7, and filings would be roughly August 15. So we need to make a motion for one of those dates, and then we can discuss and amend if needed.
I'd like to make a motion for November.
So we have a motion to have our election on, our special election on November 7. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brenna. Any questions or discussion?
I, just as somebody who's like, running right now, like, it's a lot of work to get your name out there and to get that sort of buy-in in the community. And so I would love to give whoever fills this seat the time that they would need to get a good campaign done, and give them the best chance that they can to get the community's voice behind us. I think November 7 is, I mean, we generally vote in November, and so that's something that people are used to. It's not something that they have to have gotten a special flyer about. Hopefully, they'll know that it'll resonate. And then also, I think, just financially, for me anyway, I feel like that, the possibility of us sharing special election costs would be hopefully there. So those are the reasons that I, I think that it's a, it's a good idea.
Thank you. Other discussion?
So I agree with a lot of the points that Members Zymet said. The, we have to be really, especially now, especially with the funding streams that we have, we have to be very, very thoughtful about the money that we are, we are using. And special elections aren't, they aren't cheap, and it is a lot of time and effort as well. I also, like Members Zymet said, you know, we are, we are used to voting in November. Like, that is a thing that happens in our country. And so if we are not careful, we will, you know, my worry is having a special election at an off time, and we have somebody who's elected with only, you know, like what happened to our neighbor to the north here, they had a special election, and somebody was elected to the board with 120-ish votes, and that is not the voice of our. And that is not the voice of our community. That's not, that, that is who happened to get a flyer and, and, and know. And that does not seem um, that doesn't seem equitable. It doesn't seem fair to those communities either. So I would prefer to, that's why I made the recommendation for November because that, in addition to all of those things.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Laura.
Um, I, well, I had originally um, strongly felt that having a special election as soon as possible was probably the best for the district. Um, but seeing those timelines laid out, I think that there would be so many people that wouldn't be aware of what's going on. You know, going into, you know, uh, election season, like right after the holidays and the beginning of the year. Um, uh, or around the time that people are planning, you know, well, trips that are like a little less snow. You know, um, being out of town in May or over the summer, you know, where they're, they're doing family things and not really thinking about, uh, about, about it, you know? Um, you know, when the, their families are getting their kids back off to school, they start thinking about, about things like school board and stuff like that. And I think we'd have much greater, um, greater uh, input from the community on who they would like to see represent them.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Now we'll proceed to vote and the motion um, on the floor is to have the special election in November twenty twenty-three. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, next under board topics, um, do you have the member appointment process? All right, um, just hand it out to everybody, um, the timeline to fill vacancies, which um, really starts kind of after this meeting. Um, with the postings in the local papers and the websites by um, the twenty-eighth. Um, applications due to Director Bennett by November tenth. Copy is given to the board um, November eleventh and review applications. I don't need to read all this. You guys have it in front of you. Um, but basically it comes down to um, the interviews happening in November with the appointment voted on at school board meetings um, on December thirteenth with a swearing in with the new school board members on January third. So I don't know if we have any discussion. This doesn't need to be voted on. It's not an action item. It's just a discussion item.
So just for clarity, um, we are not able to leave this seat vacant until the special election, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. No, that is not, that is not a Columbia Heights Public Schools rule. That is a law.
That's correct.
Just for clarity.
Um, and we have information here. That I had, that I had it, but yes, you are correct, Mary, that um, we um, cannot leave the position vacant pending the special election. There is a time period and a window for that. So we need to do an appointment pending the special election.
If I may add, um, as you read the filing dates, um, we wouldn't, we don't have enough time for this November to, for filing, for the appropriate amount of time for filing. So that's why it would have to go to a different date and we are, we must appoint.
And I'll, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, because of early voting happening, starting in the end of September, we would have had to have any, any additions to that ballot way before that.
I think it's eighty-four days.
It's eighty-four days? Uh, I think it's seventy-four days. But yes, there are a lot of days in between. So that's, so that's why. Um, good, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and I was just gonna mention that this is um, just for consistency sake, the same kind of timeline that we've used for vacancies in the past, so.
Yep.
Just in case anyone's wondering about the timeline and how kind of crunched it is. It's according to like when we meet um, and when these things can be done with all of those timelines in place.
Right, yep, this is, there is no statute or anything that says how you appoint. I mean, really, the board could say, we appoint Bob and that's, you know, who the new, um, I gotta be careful not to say that, right? Anyway, we report some, so-and-so, um, and that's, but you know, this board has decided that there is an application and an interview process um, that goes along with the appointment um, for that position, so.
And for clarification, we're going to be using the same application that we use to appoint um, the last vacancy.
Yeah, I think we worked really hard on that application the last time, so it makes sense to get some mileage out of it.
Well, I'm, I'm very, I'm very glad with that we took the extra steps to make sure that we removed um, exclusion language. Like um, allowing people that may not necessar, that believe they can fill the role, but may not necessarily have all the checkmarked boxes of being on, serving on committees and stuff. I'm very glad that we removed that language that would have discouraged otherwise um, a really great potential uh, board members. So I'm, I'm very glad we're continuing with that.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts on this timeline? This works for everybody. Like I said, it's not an action item. We don't have to vote on it, but always, we, we can't discuss this outside of the board table, so. All right, great.
May I, may I just add one more thing? Applications will be available via a link, like an electronic version, or um, applicants could come and pick up a paper copy from the district center.
Right, thank you. So if you're listening tonight, applications will be available. Come pick one up or encourage others to do so.
When are those available?
So I think information will be sent out to the community or posted on our website tomorrow. But then on Thursdays with our regular communication that goes out to the community, uh, it'll be included in there.
Any questions? Any other questions on that? Any other board topics? Any other, other?
I do, I do have one.
Yes.
Yay, okay. Um, thank you so much to Stacy Nakor for letting me know. But tomorrow, Donors Choose will be matching donations. We had um, so many wonderful donations um, given to our school district and students from Donors Choose. So it's really, um, I think it's really important to know that they'll be matching. And so we can, you can maximize the amount of donations and wonderful things to support our students if you want to do so tomorrow.
Great, thank you. It sounds like there's trunk or treat this weekend on Saturday.
Yes. I'm seeking some volunteer, some school board volunteers for a one-hour shift.
That starts at?
One to four, Hueset Park. We're bringing a, there'll be a school bus and there'll be a district vehicle.
Just a couple of other mentions, um, in terms of some of the athletics going on, the football game is going on right now. They're playing Edison for playoffs. Um, and also tomorrow night is um, the sections for volleyball in our new gym. So invite everyone out to join them there.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody know the score? Great, any other topics?
Um, can I also just shout out to the high school team for um, the staff and everybody who came together to make the homecoming dance really amazing? I heard wonderful things. I saw wonderful pictures. Um, my own ninth grader had not been to a school dance since he was in sixth grade um, in the first semester. So he was super excited to go and um, it was really wonderful to see all the kids together. Um, I heard there was a lot of them, but everybody had a lot of fun, so.
Great, thank you. Anything else? All right, hearing done, we will adjourn our meeting at exactly eight PM.